Education needs order, please rise for the command. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, start with the school community session. We have a recognition.
We do, we do. We have a lot of people behind the scenes in our district that do amazing work supporting teachers, administrators, and support staff. National Administrative Professionals Day is April 25th, which is tomorrow. Everyone at each school and here at Central Office, we do our own kind of recognition for the administrative assistants who do tireless and thankless work behind the scenes. So, we just wanted to take a brief moment just to share our appreciation for them on camera, and I wanted to assure the board that there's a very nice event that happens at each school and Central Office to personally thank folks, and you know, we have our own recognitions that we do in each location. They're all part of the MACE Association, and they cover the health offices, the school offices, the special education, athletic department, all across the district. So, they basically are what make us.
The brains.
Yes. So, the day itself, which years ago was called Secretary's Day, is Wednesday, the last full week of April each year, and it recognizes the work of secretaries, administrative assistants, receptionists, and other support professionals. The history behind this is during World War II, there was a shortage of skilled administrative personnel in the United States due to the depression era birth rate decline and the post-war booming business. And the National Secretaries Association, which was founded in 42, was formed to recognize the contributions of the administrative personnel to the economy and support their personal development and attract workers to the administrative field. The National Secretaries Association name was changed to the International Association of Administrative Professionals in 1998, but in 1995, the week was actually official observance and moved to the last week of April. And we do our own kind of personalized touch here at Central Office. We have a whole team of folks within transportation, technology, curriculum, special education, and they are an incredible team to work with, so just wanted to take a moment to recognize that.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, public participation, is there any member of the public that would like to speak? Hearing none. We have a student representative report with Emily and Ryan.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. So, I'd like to start by talking about Diversity Week. So, that's this week, and we've had, on Monday, we had our first PAW, and we saw a short clip where everybody was dressed in gray, and they all do the same thing, and it's supposed to represent a society where no one has any diversity. And then, they have different events that are going on each day of this week. We have a map to show where everyone's been, and we have these things where you put a star that makes you unique, and you get to hang all over the wall. And then, tomorrow, we're going to have another PAW where we all talk about like how we're all colorful and unique and different, and we have these discussion questions, and we're all going to talk about it. And then, we're going to end off the week with a day of silence, which is to support the LGBTQ+ community, and it's supposed to be like they feel like they're silenced, so then you take a vow of silence for the day, and then you kind of like see what it's like to be in issues. Then we have our senior auction for support of the 2018 class. It's this Friday in the evening, and you know, we're all giving our stuff so that we can sell it off and make money. And we're also selecting a new Board of Education Student Representative. Yeah, my son's like, "Yeah." And so, we're going to be in the process of that soon.
Ryan, you have the final vote, okay?
Along from that, we had a spring pep rally right before break, which was very energizing from what I heard, I wasn't there. Today, for the juniors, we had the SATs, which definitely, I mean, it's something everyone has to take, and it's not necessarily enjoyable, but I'm glad I got it out of the way. The college fair, mostly for juniors and sophomores and freshmen are allowed to come too, that's this Wednesday at the high school. And sports are going to be in full spring, full swing, sorry.
And it's during the spring, it's spring sports. I just took an SAT out.
Oh, and I forgot to mention one thing, we also have National History Day, which if any of you know, you start at a like a regional level, then you go to the state level, and then you go to nationals, and you either do a skit, or a website, or a presentation about a historical event. And this year, the theme is conflict and compromise. So, a couple of students and I are going to be doing that on Saturday at WestCom.
Totally put you at the spot. Did you have any news for September?
September.
For September, for you?
Oh, yeah. I'm going to Penn State.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you.
That was on the shortlist.
No, that was.
Good, excellent.
Congratulations. Superintendent's report.
I made five awesome new friends this year, and Kay did visits. So, I know the board was entertained with a discussion with our independent study students' projects back in, I think it was, did you guys come in December? I think it was a while ago, it was a while back, yeah. But they've done a road show, they've done the PTOs, they've done Boston, they're on the road to Chicago, I think, next weekend, traveling band. But Sarah, Zach, Mary are here to speak to our experience in Boston. If the board recalls, we were invited to speak at a national conference on the independent study project that we had piloted this year, which five students participated, 36 are registered for next year, okay, which I believe, and Sarah's one of them, right, yes, that'll come back and take that course. So, it's growing, and the success of it, I'm not going to rehash, was incredible. For tonight, though, I thought it'll be interesting to have our students and myself and just kind of share our experiences there, and kind of talk about how that went, and open it up for a Q and A.
Great.
So, okay, so.
Parents.
Parents, good. Our parents were actually put on the spot.
They were.
They were put on the spot, so.
Oh, the parents were on a panel as well?
Well, they, it wasn't planned. There were questions asked, and they answered.
They did.
Yeah, so if you guys want to grab a couple of chairs, I'm going to join you up there, and we can just talk. And I will be very, very frank, we did absolutely zero scripting, I did not want anything scripted tonight, I wanted them to just kind of talk from the heart about their experience and what it was like to share some interesting, cutting-edge work with other teachers and administrators. So, who would like to go first? So, I'll start, you guys, I'll warm you guys up a little bit. So, we got to Boston, and it was an amazing, right, that conference, I haven't been to Boston in a while, right on the water, I think it was the North End, it was beautiful, amazing facility, conference center. And you walk in, and really high ceilings and everything, it's huge, and you go off, and we went into our room, and there probably had about 40 or so professional educators were there, and small tables. And we had an opportunity to kind of speak as a large group, but the really cool part was we spoke in kind of breakout sessions. So, they actually manned a table, and professionals kind of gathered around them and talked to them about their experiences. So, there was a, you know, real nice free-flow Q and A back and forth.
Can you remind us what the conference was again?
Yeah, so the conference is the, one of the largest education leadership organizations internationally is the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, we call it ASCD. And there were folks in the room from as far away as China, I believe, we had Chinese educators with interpreters there, and then folks from New England and the United States.
Hawaii.
In Hawaii, that's right, that's right, yeah. So, they had a chance to share their experiences, and you have an opportunity to talk about what that was like, and kind of report back to the board.
Well, okay. One part of it was really, that was really cool, was when we broke off into the groups, I was actually kind of surprised about how excited this one man in particular was about what I was saying. I mean, I don't know, like, I just, I came in and I was really excited to talk about the project because I love the project, that's why I'm doing it again. So, I was just talking about my experience and how much I loved the independence and, you know, the lack of boundaries, and how that just really worked well for me as a student. And he was just so enthralled in what I was saying, you know, and I was expecting him to be interested, but it was like I was actually kind of having like an impact on his perspective about education, and that was something I was not expecting to be able to impart on someone, you know, so that was, I mean, it was cool, you know? So, I didn't think.
What kind of questions did he ask you?
A lot of them were kind of about how it felt to, it was the freedom, really, you know, like, it was like the lack of grades in particular was interesting to him as well. And a lot of the people at the table, they asked logistics a lot, too, you know, like, because, I'm sorry, I can't, it's mostly that sort of thing about how it was different than other classes, you know, what made it different and special.
One of the things that we did, Gail had, we have a cadre of teachers that are working in kind of the innovative spaces in our district right now, trying some different types of approaches. Gail taken them through a couple of exercises, the, I used to think, now I think, kind of experience after we've been through it for a year or two. And on that note that Sarah brought up, one of the direct quotes from the teachers is that, "After doing this kind of work, I used to think the students were only motivated by grades, and now I think they can be motivated by the process of learning if allowed to work at their own pace and take their learning to where they want it to go." So, that's a teacher kind of getting that aha, and then hearing the students articulate that as well, it's the whole equation, it's pretty special. So, I think your point, Sarah, seeing the enthusiasm of another educator from some far away place, is how all teachers kind of feel, like they kind of crack the code, like, "Oh my god," like, "That really matters to you." So, it was cool. What else?
Well, when I was talking with my group at the table, there was a student from China who was actually really interested in what I was saying, which was really cool because I was not expecting somebody to come halfway across the world to see my presentation. And actually, there were some special ed teachers there, too, who were really interested in what I was talking about and where I wanted to go with it, so that was nice.
So, I kind of like them, had a gentleman from a faraway place, Singapore, who was very interested in kind of the process that we were pursuing in this whole class. And so, beyond just explaining just the, how the American school system works just on the fundamental level, because of course theirs is very different from ours.
Absolutely.
Trying to, he seemed very interested in applying this to their school system, of course, I don't know much about theirs, same way he didn't know much about ours. But I think most of the questions they asked were logistically based, how many students should you have for class, or did you have your class, or should it, you know, be orchestrated? Should it be in a library, standard classroom environment? And so, I think that kind of logistical question was very common. But I think as far as the grading was concerned, there were very mixed, some of them seemed far more hesitant than other teachers, but I think, once we got towards the end of the conversation, a lot more of them were on board, and I think that kind of goes back to the quote that you were just mentioning. You were able to get an elective course that motivated a bunch of seniors.
Right.
Which is a little bit of a feat, especially in trimester two, right?
It is.
And I think, personally, I was very passionate about my subject, I won't go into all the details, but I had pursued it in the past just by personal life, and being able to apply something that I use in my personal life in school was very, very interesting for me. And I think a lot of the people there found that to be very interesting, and trying to, a lot of the teachers were also asking how to kind of take these strategies and apply them to our standard curriculum. So, for example, how do you take kind of an independently-led study kind of scenario and apply that to, say, literature, right, as opposed to just this kind of capstone-esque system?
Yeah, that was another thing for us, too, sorry.
No, go ahead, go.
That came up as well, like, they were like, "Okay, but how would we implement this, say, in a history class?" You know, which is a discussion-based thing, you know, you can certainly conduct it that way, but the projects, you know, that was something that was a big question for them. But they were interested, you know, they were thinking about how to branch it out into things, you know, just beyond what we were doing, which was also really cool. It's cool to think about education going that way.
Well, it's, yeah, and, you know, I think the five of you have known for some time now that you have the opportunity to impact, you know, future generations of education in Madison through this experience, like the lessons that we're learning from here. And it was, I think, a service to you academically, but equally a service to the district and the 3,000 kids that'll come through the system, because we have had a chance to incubate these ideas with our kids, our own students, with a very, very talented teacher. And just as those questions were asked of you, as, "Well, how does this work in another subject area, another department, another class?" That's the question that I had. Remember, I told you guys, I want to know, "How do you scale some of these things?" Every class, we're not going to have every kid do every independent project in every class times, you know, four grades, but what are the things that were done here that other teachers can replicate? And say, and really, it was your level of engagement and your level of enthusiasm and energy that led us to believe we're on to something with some of these things. You know, the grading thing was a huge thing, and I think it was Amy who said to me that, you know, the pass/fail piece of this was so important because it freed her to learn. You've all kind of shared that, it freed you to learn. But I've always said to you guys that I believe that failure is the greatest teacher, and then Amy said to me, who couldn't be here tonight, she said, "Well, then, why is the entire system set up for us to avoid failure if that's such a great teacher?" So, it made us really think about, you know, the process of learning, which I think is what the educators wanted to know, like, "Well, how did it impact you, how did it affect you?" So, interesting stuff, so. Questions? Yeah, oh, lots of hands going up.
I would like to know, in this independent project, how are you able to express your creativity?
I think anyone you wanted to, really, I mean, you got all the independence in the world for it, so, I mean, Sarah's doing a movie. We did presentations, I mean, it really depends on what you wanted to do.
But it wasn't just a research project with Googled information, right?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think to go off of that, it could be if you wanted it to be. There was no defined end, kind of, end, you know, home base that you were trying to accomplish. I mean, Sarah was making a movie, but mine was much more the academic side.
Cool difference, yeah.
So, yeah, while she was, she was doing a movie, I was researching a lot of geopolitical stuff on the North Korean and South Korean conflict on the Korean Peninsula. And so, that, you really can't do much in the way of a creative outreach with that, right? That's almost entirely academic, you know, you research, you come up with ideas that you can implement in policy, but there's very little a senior in high school can do creatively about that. And so, I think you could be as creative as you wanted to be, or you could do the standard academic route. And I think giving that flexibility allowed us to choose how creative we wanted to be.
Yeah, I think the only time that I Googled something was to check if I spelled a word right in my screenplay.
I have a question from parents. I, I mean, thrive on structure in my house, basically four boys, how is this like for you? I mean, it's a very different way than we did high school. Was it, did you feel like there was too much freedom? Did you feel like the lack of grades was too loosey-goosey? I mean, it's very different, how did you feel about it?
I guess I'll start first. I, completely non-issue, because I felt like his motivation on this was higher than the motivation on the classes that required grades, you know, because it was self-motivated, it was something that was of interest. And so, to me, if something's coming from you and it's something you want to learn, and I think in the case of a lot of these projects, these are things that the kids are actually thinking about doing for their careers, and thinking about bringing it to the world in some way. And so, the fact that they could operate from that perspective, it required no motivation and no oversight and no, it was nothing but seeing them doing something for the love of learning, and that was just a great thing, so it was completely a non-issue.
I know, I can comment on that. I didn't know where the project was going to go, and I really liked seeing that be completely in Mary's hands. And I think actually the project ended up in a different place than she expected it to be, which was really rewarding for her. And frankly, that's an opportunity that I haven't seen happen quite in the way that it did, except for with such freedom. And while I don't know that that would be scalable to a large setting and have the same types of results, it really was something that she ended up valuing in different ways than what she envisioned at first, and that was, that freedom was a big part of it.
Yep, one of the things that we have been doing research on at the admin team level is just pure motivation theory. And we have a bit of a think tank going on that Gail and I are facilitating with our administrative team, and we're trying to craft a little white paper, because we, what we've realized is a lot of the work we're doing at the core of it is based on motivation theory. And having the five students go through this experience, we've uncovered that, you know, as you said before, Dana, that, yeah, the intrinsic motivation piece is what really led to a kind of a gradual release of responsibility from the teacher directing everything to the students kind of owning it. And that gradual release is, it's capable, there's a capability for all kids in different ways, but it really aligns tightly with motivation theory that's been around for decades. And we, you know, I think it's counterintuitive, we think we need to have, you know, the, and some kids may need more scaffolds, but there's a lot to be said that at the core of motivation theory is choice. And that's something that you had, ubiquitous choice, you know, I know you were coached, right, with Mrs. Stock, but there was choice on what you were teaching, or what you were learning, how you were going to be learning it, how you were going to present that learning, so whether that's a creative side or not, the choice piece seemed to be present throughout the whole course, so. More questions here?
Does this actually ever work? No, it doesn't.
Just Williams here, so.
I just wondered if you could review your projects, and I know that you did North Korea, and the follow-up question is, if you have any comments on?
Yeah, sure. My name's Mary. I did a project on, it started out as volunteer work with therapeutic coursework writing, so kids with disabilities, just to name a couple, Down Syndrome, brain tumors, cystic fibrosis. I took them on with a group called The Next Step, and we would go out and ride, and they just got to do something independently, which is very different from like most of their life. And then I decided that I wanted to take it like step farther because I wanted a lasting effect with the program, so I started to do their marketing work and developed posters, ads, brochures, like, you name it, I would do it for them. And now I think I might want to go into marketing and business.
Just before, and before we continue, too, the board is very familiar with our 21st century capacities, our student outcomes. There were two of them identified that were very clearly the kind of academic thinking skill outcomes that you had, you know, your projects were attached to. So, I don't know if they were all the same across all five, I'm not sure if you guys...
No, I think we have to choose them.
You chose two.
I chose citizenship and something.
Okay. Yeah, I know citizenship was a big one that you had as well, yeah. Sarah?
I'm Sarah. I did a movie, that was, you know, well, did, I'm actually still working on it, and I'm getting there. It's going really well, actually, the news is all really exciting, yeah.
Sam Stein is in it.
Yeah. Yeah. Hopefully, we're actually filming a scene this weekend, which is super exciting, it's the most important in my book, actually, that we're filming, so it's, yeah, it's been really cool, though, the entire process, and this class made it possible. I would not have been able to do it if it wasn't for this, and this is composing the majority of my portfolio when I then go on to apply to film programs at different colleges. So, this has a lot of implications in my life at the moment, and it's been incredible. And I think that, I mean, I'm hoping that we'll do festivals, and I'm excited, it's coming out great.
So, I'm Mary Kay, I studied the differences over time between physical, mental disabilities, how the world has handled it, where it's come, and the passion that I got from that was because I'm interested in unified sports and programs that help special needs kids. So, I mean, that was really cool to study, and I think I found something that I want to do with my life, so that was really fun, and worth while, for sure.
So, I'm Zach, I started out my project, I was originally going to do the psychology of first responders, that's just something that's close to me. I'm a first responder myself, I'm a volunteer junior firefighter at Post Company One downtown, and through them I received EMT training, so I am going to be taking my certification for that nationally very soon. And so, I figured that would be a very natural thing for me to do, but I met, you know, the old teacher failure, and about two weeks in, and they convinced me to switch topics. And so, about two weeks into the trimester, I switched to another thing that I've been doing. Earlier in the summer, I had done ballistic missile defense training course with the Air Force via Cadet Corps, I'm part of the Civil Air Patrol, and so, I kind of took that training and applied just my interest in politics. And so, over the course of trimester, I kind of developed a very in-depth understanding of specifically the military and tactical applications of our defenses versus their weapon systems, and what kind of geopolitical things we could do to hopefully alleviate the possibility of ever happening to use them. So, mine didn't really have a pretty end product, in the same way a lot of theirs did. Mine was, again, much more the academic side, but I've been keeping up, for sure. But it was just a great opportunity for me to take something that I had been very passionate about in my personal life and apply it to school, and also, while my mom isn't very happy about it, I'm thinking of joining the military in ROTC, and if I do, I would most likely end up doing something with ballistic missile defense because of my training through the Air Force so far, and just because of my passion in the topic broadly. So, that was, that was my project.
Well, you assigned homework in this course.
No, but I did it.
Did you do, did you do work outside of school on your projects? Almost all of it.
Yesterday, I worked for 10 straight hours. It was the most delightful 10 hours I've ever had.
Amy Corcoran, who couldn't be here tonight, also made an interesting observation where she said that she had the opportunity to take AP Physics and chose with her mom and dad, they said, "Try that in a bad study thing," and she did it, and, you know, didn't turn back and regret it one bit because she uncovered, like you all, I think, something about yourself that might be permanent, might be something you want to pursue, a passion. So, that was pretty consistent with the group. So, if we can give kids one gift, you know, on the way out the doors, to kind of find out who you are and what you want to do and what your passion is, it's a big deal.
You know, I think we actually may have just discovered that every single one of us did a project and now is at least strongly considering it as a career option.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
It's infectious, too, that your enthusiasm and excitement, and so I have no doubt you're all going to do great things with that.
Fascinating how starving educators from literally around the world, you know, are for information that these guys have gleaned through this process, you know, the questions and how hungry they were with, you know, for answers directly from kids about, you know, motivation, how'd you make it happen, what'd you do with the free time, and how do you do this when it's so open-ended? You know, it's, we have the most institutionally rigid system at the high school level, it's been around for, you know, decades and decades and decades. And, you know, to be able to scratch the surface with our five students here, and hopefully to a great, you know, degree after this with the lessons we've learned, I think as much as you have benefited, we have benefited from what you all have done here. And on behalf of the board, we thank you for your courage and your willingness to participate in this, and really, more importantly, share what you've learned with us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Really, thank you.
Just a couple insights I wanted to share, one thing that came out of the educator conference that I didn't know as a parent going into it was how much you learn from each other, to the collaborative nature of you all learning and sharing your strengths and your skills with each other, whether it was helping to do a presentation or put together a website. So, that kind of learning, that is real-life applicable stuff, that was kind of on the side of whatever the core element of your project was, you learn real skills that you're going to apply, and they did that in a way that's collaborative, teaching each other, which is, I felt, very cool. Also, one of the educators asked the question of the parents at the end, saying, you know, "Weren't you concerned that, how would this look in college applications? Like, it's not a, it's pass/fail, it doesn't fit in the normal box?" And the answer I wish I said, and I, and after I left, was I actually think it's the perfect thing for college applications, because every essay, every college asks an essay that gets to the essence of what makes you a different candidate, or what makes you, we have 30,000 candidates we're looking at, what makes your experience stand out, or what makes you stand out, or what, you know, there's always an essay like that. And the fact that these kids can answer that question through the lens of experience, and through the lens of, "I've done something that matters, and I've done something that applies to my life." And I almost worry about the kids that are only doing the AP honors thing and only signing up for your basic school activities, because they don't stand out, nor do they know anything about what they want for their future. But these kids can, and these kids can answer that essay in a way that's very different. So, I would, I would argue it's a real asset to that college application process, because that was the end result that some people were worried about.
I think the team market you spoke about, Dana, is cool, because all of your projects are so markedly different from the next one, and yet, you were able to encourage each other to change direction if necessary. And yet you were able to encourage each other to change direction if necessary or keep going. And so the fact that, you know, with that amount of diversity that you guys were able to also work as a team and with Mrs. Stott, as well to guide you is just, it's so telling about what a great class this was for you.
That was vastly different in this design not to have a teacher who was expert in all of the topics that they picked. So that was a big risk on the teacher's part as well, to kind of let go of that expertise and say, I'm going to nurture you along your way and hopefully direct you to the right resources. And really used a variety of techniques to do that. So that was a really exciting part of it, too. And I just wanted to add, you know, you all did a fabulous job. And that conference was an international conference of over 10,000 educators. And a lot of gurus in education came up to Mr. Scorsese and myself afterwards and said, we heard you had students present. And they had never had students present at this conference.
Yeah, these are kids presenting this. Very impressive.
Thank you again. We'll be in touch. Congratulations for a couple of them coming up.
I'm excited. Yeah, it'll, I'll show it. That's for sure. I want to see the movie, too.
There's a couple of juniors, a couple of seniors, so we'll be graduating with a couple, but we'll also have some back next year, so. So thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming. Oh, so much. So I have a topic suggestion for the next set, the Carnegie System. If someone did that, what they can do away with our institutionalized law.
That's it. That's it. Carnegie units.
Okay, balance score.
Yeah, so we have a couple of quick updates. At the last board meeting, we had a nice substantive discussion on where we stand as a board with the balance scorecard. We've been talking about this now for a while as our guiding document for, for the overall district work and potentially board goals and so forth. We're hoping, the administration's hoping for a board adoption at an upcoming meeting, perhaps on May 8th. In the interim, there were some questions that were raised and some points that we made. I know there was some communication that we had shared between Seth, who's not here tonight, and then with the planning committee today around a couple of bullets for the stakeholder outcomes. So those first three stakeholder outcomes are where, you know, the board's governance role really resides. And Seth had some contributions and Gail and I took a stab at capturing those statements. So we'll hand this out and in the interim, we can circle back before the next board meeting through a memo. And have the board digest that. So once this makes its way around, Gail and I can just show you what was changed. So it's in the, the first stakeholder outcome, which are parents and students. And the underlined, you have the red line version, here, the underlined is what was changed. Educational experiences engaging and values the well-being of the whole child while offering choices for the future. So the whole child piece was really the spirit of what Seth was talking about with choices for the future, with fostering diverse abilities and emotional and physical well-being. So that's kind of how we captured it. And then the definition is what's critical. The operational definitions are really important so that we're all on the same page. The first bullet of that is why it's important. The second bullet is what we're trying to actually accomplish. And the third bullet is how we'll do it. And we made a change under the second bullet there, which begins with by creating educational experiences that recognize their strengths and so forth.
And the last bullet also applies the same facet.
Which was already there, correct? So it was just our first pass at it this morning. So there's plenty of opportunity for some discussion on this after this meeting and before the next one. And there's no ticking clock, so if it's May 22nd, that's fine, too. But we're just hoping that we can, as soon as possible. And we also talked about the, Greg had mentioned kind of the rhythm of review, being very transparent and public. So when we put together the actual scorecard, which has dates and measures on it, particularly for the stakeholder outcomes, which would be our alumni study, for example, which would be our community survey, we would put on the scorecard itself that it's biennial and even years, or biennial and odd years. And then also codify the frequency that we review the whole scorecard, whether that's annually, every two years, every three years and so forth. So we can talk about what we're comfortable with, with that overall review. I would advise that too frequent of a review of something this large may, may, you know, kind of take us off the long-term course. But I wouldn't advise every five years either. You know, I think somewhere in the middle would be appropriate. But this is really where the board's fingerprints are most important on the stakeholder outcomes and those measures. And that's the directive to us then with the process initiatives that go below on a strategy map, a one-page strategy. Is that it, Gail?
I have a comment on the, and I might not be remembering it very well, but I know we talked about the fact that it will be live, real-time. We talked about sort of for things that we don't think are going so well, we, like, would we put in red or like, you know, to be careful of that. That juxtaposed with the review cycle. So say something's up in red, but it's not up for review for another two years. We just need to be mindful of that.
I would totally agree. And I, you know, as we talked about that, and I think we kind of batted that idea around, we probably should have, I think adopting it is one thing, which we can do. Deciding what would be public consumption for, you know, real-time data. Maybe the stakeholder outcomes are the best ones because it is those large-scale, the alumni study, for example, exit, you know, kind of piece. So that's good input.
Just to add that, one way that you could approach that with the language, I think, is to say that you will review at least this often. So no more than two years will pass between reviews or something like that. So that way, if you want to jump in six months later, if something's off the rails, you.
Briefly, we have kindergarten enrollment numbers for the, I need to get the right year here. The 18, 19 year, we projected 138 and we're only 10 off that right now with 128. So we're approaching that number and we haven't even hit May yet. So we were slightly off last year and we had to open up an extra section. Might happen, it might not this summer, but we'll see. But if the board abreast of those numbers.
Board member comments? I actually have a couple things on the kindergarten front. Tomorrow's the kindergarten open house for, and, and this year we're going to have three representatives at the different elementary schools representing the board. So thank you to Greg and Violet and Emily for stepping up to just be present if, if people have questions. And then the other thing I failed to mention at our last meeting was the executive committee met with Tom to conduct his biannual review. So that has been done and I will be reaching out soon to schedule our retreat to do the annual. That's it. Committees, planning committee.
Planning committee, I am standing at the desk. Planning committee met this morning. We reviewed an initial draft of recommended fourth and fifth grade schedules for the 2019, 2020 school reconfiguration that were presented by Julie Phelps and Rebecca Porto. This draft included curriculum hours and specials and potential instructional models. And it's still being reviewed and refined and it will come back to planning. And then we will share a draft with the board members for feedback. Julie and Rebecca also gave us an update on responsive classroom implementation at Brown. They're halfway through the four training sessions with this and sixth grade staff. And they expect to complete them all in June so that they can implement the following year. And a nice benefit of the timing is that for, when the school reconfiguration happens, fourth grade and sixth grade teachers will already have experience with the model. So as they're moving up, you'll have sort of one year of more experienced teachers who could potentially mentor. So teachers have a little bit less experience. Rebecca and Gail also presented the teacher valuation plan updates. They've made updates to the teacher growth profile and the service provider growth profile, which is what you guys have in front of you, to align them more closely to the professional development and language that the district uses. The board will need to take action and approve the plans for implementation, but not tonight, for your review tonight. We received an updated planning timeline for the school reconfiguration and it was just sort of minor cosmetic changes so that it was a little bit easier to follow. And additionally, we discussed adding a timeline and schedule to the balance scorecard under measures, slightly refining some of the language and adding in the timing for regular review cycles per measure for full transparency, as Tom just discussed.
Thank you. Policy. Yes, policy. Okay, so you have in your board packet. Go ahead. Okay, I skipped Greg.
Are you okay?
So in your board packet, you have policy number 4141, social networking for your second reading. You'll see the changes in there that were made, moving some portions around. Clarifying a couple of quick things. If you have any questions or comments about it, please let me know and we can discuss it more in policy or if anyone has any questions about it. We also will be bringing to our next board meeting, policy bylaw 9400. I mentioned this last time and I actually do have copies over there from our policy meeting if you want. We made, we recommend a one-word change, like I mentioned last time, to match other portions of the bylaws. And the policy committee will recommend next week that we waive the second and third readings because it is a technical one-word change. So stay tuned for that and I can get you copies of that if you want to take a look at it before. Personnel.
I believe we have no report.
Finance.
Finance committee met this evening and we reviewed the updated forecast for the 2017-18 budget. We are still showing a deficit, which makes it unlikely that we will have any funds for return to the town. And most likely will require us to utilize a special education reserve fund.
But we're keeping an eye on it.
We're monitoring.
Learn lead.
Yes, the Learn Board of Directors met on April 12th. The Directors to Support Services at that time gave a presentation on Institute Support Services Program, including the history of the program and the development of services, in addition to outlining the capabilities of a new diagnostic center. That centers comprise a professional staff, including a child psychiatrist, that will help in providing a continuum of support. In addition, all Learn Out programs will be consolidated into one location to help serve complex needs children from kindergarten through age 21, creating a unified community and easier transitions through the grade levels. And then finally, at the request of a Learn Board member, the board held a roundtable discussion on regional transportation needs, issues and challenges. And this conversation will continue at the next meeting with a continued focus on exploring regional transportation solutions. So stay tuned.
Any questions? Emily. Facilities committee.
Have not met since the workshop, so there's really no next report.
Great. Okay. Audience response.
Hit up you guys.
Did you get that in minutes? Consent agenda. All those in? A motion to approve. Thank you. Good. Consent agenda.
Second.
Second? Those in favor? Motion passes. Action to, motion to approve the minutes of the April 10th, 2018 board education meeting. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Any old business? Future agenda items? Oh, sorry. Oh, future agenda item. Gotcha.
I would like us to either go through policy or just take action as a board to officially change our district colors to black and gold.
That's bold.
It is bold, I know. But I don't know, I'm really an honest person, but I would, I think it would be good. The official district colors right now are blue and white.
And everything we do is black and gold.
And everything we do is black and gold, including all our school uniforms.
What's the history behind that?
I'm not sure. We could have that to be another time, but I, or maybe it should be a policy. I don't know.
Do you have a master course in that?
There's nothing in the bylaws. I can tell you that. I think it's just, we'll have to do a history search and figure out there may, who knows if there's some significance of import, right?
Bob will not only have it, he'll have a great story behind it.
We'll look into that. That's an interesting agenda.
Thank you.
I'll call Bob Hale. Not even write that down. Meeting minutes and dates of importance are attached. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.